My name is Richard Hadley. I'm the Information Officer for California Incident Management Team One. We're primarily a federal-sponsored team, but we have representatives also from local government throughout the state of California. We would have liked to have been here to help you at the beginning, but all our teams in California were deployed on other fires at that time. So you got to meet some great people from down south who came up and helped you through some of the most trying times on this fire. What we want to do tonight is give you a briefing on where the fire is right now and how we're doing in terms of getting this thing contained and eventually controlled. That's the primary purpose for the meeting. But also, we understand that there's a lot of questions that have to do with what next, and there's a lot of people here who are in attendance who might be able to help answer some of those questions. So, once we get through the fire briefing and questions about the fire, then after that we'll break out, and those people will be available to talk with you about some of the post-fire issues that you're facing. Now, I'll point out who we have tonight. You have Susan Skolski, Forest Supervisor, she's going to speak here in just a minute. Jerry McGowan, our Incident Commander, who is from Sonora, and formerly Fire Management Officer here on the Stanislaus National Forest, and now Chief of the Fire Department for the Toowalomee Ewok Tribe. Also, in attendance is Maggie Dowd, District Ranger here in the Groveland area, and Maggie's going to have a few words for us at the end. And then John Exnight, who is here, and I believe you're able to see, helping Susan out while she can get a couple of days off. Yes. And then the other folks that are here who would like to be able to speak with you after is your Toowalomee County Supervisor, John Gray, is in the back. He's been working really closely with us along with the other supervisors, going to many meetings about the fire suppression. We really appreciate his support, and he would like to be able to talk with you about some of the assistance the county, the Office of Emergency Service can provide to you moving forward from this point. Then, we have two Burned Area Emergency Response Teams that are working in tandem here, one for the National Park Service, and that representative is Chris Holback, in the back of the room here. He's leading a team that's assessing the watershed damages and other damages inside Yosemite National Park. And then the Forest Service has more than 70 people working under Todd Ellsworth back here, and he's the Bear Team Leader. And those two guys have worked together for years on big projects like this across the west, so they'll be available to talk with you about what they're doing in terms of trying to get a quick assessment of the watershed conditions, and what you might expect this winter, and what might be able to be done to help mitigate some of those issues. We also have Steve Lashy from CAL FIRE, back here, if you have a CAL FIRE question, they'll be here to help. And then, just met Rick Weingra, who is with the Fire Safe Council. There's some materials out here, and he's right in the front row here, if you want to talk to him about the Fire Safe Council, he's here. And then with our team is two liaisons, Officer Steve Nagro and Dennis Orpous in the back. And those guys have been working with all the cooperators, different folks who have issues. So if there's something related to the fires, such as you have a dozer line that's near you, and you wonder if that's going to be repaired before we leave, those two guys would be able to work with you on those issues. So now we're going to move into, I'll hand it over to Susan, just going to do an introduction. Then Jerry will give you a presentation on where we stand with the fire. Then we'll do the question and answer portion of that regarding the fire. And then Maggie will close out, and then we will go into that breakout session so you folks can, oops, I forgot, I introduced one park service, but we also have Mike Gauthier, who is representing Don Newbarker with Yosemite National Park. So, they're also here if you have questions about the park. So, thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan, and then we'll get going.
Thank you, Richard. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. We love public meetings, because we love meeting with you and giving you the information that you need, and keeping you abreast of what's happening with this gigantic fire. Thank you. I wasn't at the public meeting that you had when some of you, I think, were evacuated or were certainly under evacuation advisory. I know Maggie Dowd was here, and the team at the time was here, but we're really, we're still actively fighting fire to some degree. A lot of the fire work that we're doing now, Jerry will cover when he talks, but I wanted to let you know that we're, there's kind of multiple things going on right now. Certainly, we can never forget that there's still fire, and there's always some potential for active fire, even today, three and a half weeks later from when this fire started. But we're also doing something called Fire Suppression Repair, which is work that the Incident Management Team that is here starts putting into place on the activities of where we're trying to suppress the fire. For example, some of those hand lines that were built, the dozer lines that were built, the heli spots that were constructed. So, we're actively doing that work, and it's basically the Incident Management Team that's doing that. The Bear Team is here today, and they're the Burned Area Emergency Response Team, and you'll be hearing more about that as well. That is a kind of a rapid assessment team that comes in and really looks at how we need to very quickly stabilize soils and a variety of different things that were impacted from the fire, so that by the time the first rains come, which we know is a month, five weeks off, you know, on the average sometime in October, trying to provide that stabilization that will keep things in place from going basically downhill and into the water system. So, that's another thing that's going on. That team is here, and it's, there's actually two teams. There's one on the park side, and the introduction was done, and there's one on the forest side, but they're working very closely together on that. And then, the forest itself is working on that long-term restoration and recovery. You know, we know we're going to be salvaging timber out there. We know that a whole lot of range fence was burned up. We know that recreation facilities, a lot of our campgrounds, lost toilets, lost signage, you know, lost picnic tables, all those kinds of things. A whole variety of things were impacted out there that we're looking at pulling together a team that is going to help us as quickly as we possibly can within all our normal regulations and policy, get through that. So, certainly some of that timber, before it's lost its value, is going down the hill to the mill, as well as doing a lot more restoration work that helps us get trees planted in the ground and get a forest growing there again. So, just want to kind of highlight those three things for you. And with that, am I turning it over to Jerry? So, I'll be here after. I'd be happy to talk with folks individually if you'd like as well. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good. Hey, a couple of things. I'll give you a quick update. First off, the fire is about 253,000 acres, maybe it's a little more than that, but it's in the 250,000 range, 250,000. Big fire, right? So, that's one thing. It's $105 million cost to date. Nine injuries to date, all total in the fire, and we'll talk a little bit about those. The other thing is, as my friend Rich was going through that, going through how many people were here, or introducing people, also, one of the people I'm working with is Kelly Martin back there in the back from the Park Service, and they just wanted to make sure she was mentioned so she wouldn't kick me. So, that's part of the two. So, let's go around this thing. Everybody knows pretty much a lot about this fire over here on this side. How many are from Groveland? Raise your hands. Okay. That's a good portion of you. How many people went to the Toowalomee Heart Meeting here the other night, Sunday night? Okay, a few. So, all right. I just have to get a flavor of who my audience is and all that kind of stuff. So, all right, as we start on this thing here, and we work around, you know that a lot of this stuff is looking good, and it's been in more like patrol and monitor, and making sure that all these smokes are out here on the south end of the Toowalomee here, and working all the way to coming around up to our train flat and into the park. It's looking pretty good. And I'm going to give you the fire stuff, and then I'm going to give you the suppression repair, and I'll explain that a little bit as I go. So as we come around up here, and the other, I'm losing track of time, but about three, four days ago, we opened up Highway 120.
Friday.
Friday. Okay, keep me honest. We opened up Highway 120, we made sure that was snagged, you know, it's not us, it's just not the team, it was CAL Trans, Sheriff's Department, HAB Patrol, you name it, there was a bunch of people that worked on this thing, okay? And the Park Service, we worked all the way down here to get it down into the valley for common people down in, using the big old flat rider, right? And so, this is all good, when that started opening up, then we started opening up other stuff. And then one of the places that's still closed is this Tyoga Road. And the reason being is like, as I brought you from over here, fairly rapidly by the way, coming around here and having, we did have some heat here. This is called the Division S, but right down in this area here, there was some heat, not across the line, but against the line, there was a lot of burns there along the fire's edge, and we had to break those up and start getting the heat out of there, because it could sneak in there and just stay there for a while, right? And then, and possibly cross the line. So, we've been beating on this piece of line right here pretty hard to make sure that it's out. As we come around here to the Tyoga Road, they're still working, there's roughly eight crews, four of them staying in on this line, and I have a flying in food to them. We got a whole bunch of logistical support trying to pin this thing down right down here in the line. There's, believe it or not, we brought in sprinklers to cool, there's a lot of effort going on here. Sprinklers to cool this thing down and plumbing it, you know, on the map, it shows us like seven miles. The guys out there are telling me it's about 50. So, you know what I mean, it's kind of one of those things, I get it, it's a long ways in. And so, they're working this area right here, and they're, it is one of our hottest spots on the whole entire fire at this point in time, is this area here, and there's a lot of, a lot of crews working that at this time. And as we come back down here to the reservoir, Hatchet Reservoir, we tied this off, this is looking pretty good. We're using this, as you see, there's a black line there, and the black line indicates that it's a closed line, that we have high confidence it's not going to move anywhere. But I got to tell you, that reservoir, I mean, it's straight up, straight down, right? It's pretty steep stuff. And, but there's still fire on the edges of that, you know, on the cliffs and all that stuff, but we're not going to put people in there and all that, and all that. But the water's a pretty good line also, so we'll count that as black. Out here, we've been checking this here, this has been worked on, some of this, and what's up here, we know what this is, right?
Red.
Right. Feeling pretty confident about that, right? Yeah, I'm into it. So this is pretty much all rock right here, we're just kind of checking it right there. There's not a lot of crews going up there, but it is one of those things that we're kind of stopping the spread right here. And the same with this, we got four 10-person crews just going from rock to rock to rock, and using some of the natural barriers out there, and just kind of hitting it so it won't quit spreading, and we'll be done with it. That's our idea there, on these fingers up and through here between Eleanor and Cherry. And then as you come over here, you got, you know, you're coming into the headwaters of Cherry Lake, and you folks probably remember this area, what's this one here? What was this here? I don't remember the year, sure.
Right. That was a group.
Well, that's a little too old, Tom, but you're right. No, man, I'm talking the last few years. This was a Kibbe Fire, remember? It was a fire that was, we were working with the park and everything, and then it went down here by Cherry Lake, around a 73. I wasn't even born then. This area here was...
You're talking 1973.
This area, it's still being checked right here, and we're still checking the other side here, and there's a lot of good work going there. Let me tell you, there's a lot of good work, and there's a lot, quite a few fires. There's 2,700 firefighters, we've been nailing this thing down, and I'll talk about that a little bit too, is reducing the folks here. And then, this right along here, coming up into Reynolds Creek and all that, is getting tied up. So, what's the point? The point is, it hasn't moved, it hasn't spotted. The thing, when I've got this fire, the issues that we had, it was spotted. In other words, when I say, you got to know what spot is? Okay, there's a test after this, when I do this, so if you don't, let me know. You know, it's just basically, when that stuff is getting aerial, it's going to go outside the line, and we've had spots about up to a mile out, and a mile and a half, that's a long ways, you know? So, but there's been a lot of work, especially like in this country, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, but we've had quite a few spots. The water, the weather has moderated quite a bit here in the last day, today. Today's the first day, but we've hit that high, you know, we've gotten into that warming trend and all that kind of stuff, and that thing has kind of been getting this thing a little active. If you guys have been looking at maps, been staying with the maps? Yeah. Remember the donut hole?
Yeah.
Right here, remember that big spot? How many acres?
10,000.
Yes. 10,000. Okay, you win. It was 10,000. That sucks when somebody guesses, and they guess the first thing, you're lucky, that took the steamer. But it was, it was a 10,000 hole there. And that, what we did is when we first got here, and this is the thing that was giving us somewhat of fits in the sense of it was spotting because it was getting the heat. So, moly.
The area this year went on, it just spotted.
Pretty funny, real funny. Okay, back to the action here. So, this was about a 10,000 acre, 10,000 acre donut hole that we took, and we put up a helicopter and dropped some aerial devices that'll start fires atop the ridges and let it work off the ridges, and try to get this thing away from, away from the long. You know, we didn't want it to take a head fire back to the line, hit the line, spot, and we're chasing this thing out in the Wright's Creek Country and all that stuff, and threatening Long Barn, and all that good stuff. So what we did is, and it worked, I mean, calculated, it wasn't a chance to, huh? I know, I didn't mean to make it like, "It worked!" You know, it was like, but it was kind of like, "Hey, hurrah!", you know, it's kind of like one of those things. But, and it was, it was a good move to take this stuff and work this stuff off the top of the ridge lines and all that, and work it down, and take the energy out of the fire so it wouldn't hit the line. And that was a very good move. This is one of the things that my friend Steve Lashy, who was one of the instant commanders here, was running, left me that little present there. So, any rate, that thing moderated quite a bit of the fire up here in the top, and took, in my words, the wolf away from the door. Okay, so, this thing started, the crews here have been really, really working hard, getting some depth in the mop up, taking and working the line, and getting the, putting the fire out against the line, and getting farther, farther. We kind of wanted, you know, and a lot of times, we asked for about like 300 feet in, and we started with that. But those nine, the nine injuries, four of those are on my watch, and while people were going in here, they were stepping in stump holes and stuff. One, you know, the first one was going in, went into about ankle deep, and second-degree burns, flew into Fresno, burned center, and they were working. Then another one, and this is a day and a half, and every injury I know of, I mean, if it's a bug in a young guy's ear, I know. If he's sick, I know. If he's got back spasms, I know. So, I knew about this one, we fly that one down there, and he had second-degree burns. Another young lad goes into, and you know what? When I was a young lad, I stepped in those stump holes too, so I agree, and John Buckley, being a hotshot in his past, knows that he stepped in one of those too. So many people do that, it's kind of common, but the thing that was uncommon here, at least for me, is that those things were just hot. I mean, they were just burning. And a young lad went into one, and he went up to his butt, and he had second-degree burns and some third, and, you know, they were working on him too. And Am, he went to, we sent him to Fresno, and they're working. So, what I'm saying here is, when they were working on, one guy was cutting some stuff, and he was burning on some hot areas, a lot of these, believe it or not, were right in this area, which was the Division Nora, and they were cutting stuff up, and splatters heat on his face, burns his lips and all that kind of thing. And then another one, you know, was just getting some embers in his back, and it burned in his back and all that, second-degree burns and all that. This is not cool. This is not good. So, you know, it's like, okay, enough of going farther and farther in, you know, the 300 footing here, let's let it cool off quite a bit here, and change a little bit of our strategy of asking too much too quick and all that kind of stuff, if that's the problem. Again, a lot of people go, "Well, don't step in the stump hole." Well, yeah, but that, I mean, it's white ash out there, and it's real hard to tell whether, where you step, you know, if you're stepping into like a minefield, if you will. So, we kind of just, in a lot of places, we're just, we're going to 100 feet, and then we'll work our way back into 200 feet and let this thing cool off a bit, and not get so excited trying to do 300, 300 feet in. That's part of the strategy here too. All in all, you were to ask them, "Okay, what's the fire doing? Get over?" Is, it's looking very good. No spot fires in the last two to three days. The fire is basically standing still, we're still working on this area here, and working this, and still checking in within those rocks, and finishing this up right here, and it's doing very, very good. Now, I'm going to switch pages. Suppression repair, you got to start putting this thing, working on these areas and putting water bars in and doing all that stuff. How, you guessed 10,000 acres, right? Well, I bet you don't know this one. How many miles do you think, and this is just a rough guess by the way, you can't hold me to this, how many miles do you think of dozer line and repair work we have to do? Calculate.
600.
125. 10,000? I'm talking miles, not acres, not acres, miles. 225, is what you say?
900.
900. 900? You think that guy in the back made 900 acres? No. 120 miles so far. So it's not bad. Remember, you're going to use roads, you're going to use existing roads, like this is the 120 road and all that kind of stuff, and we're not going to touch the road, that's CAL Trans and all that kind of stuff. But it is 120, 20 miles roughly, and I'm including this too, this is another one of those, this was a contingency line there, starting at Apple Colony, going underneath Toowalomee, Toowalomee, and then working its way up all the way to Pinecrest. You know, so there's a good section here that they've been working on, and it's taken probably, I think we're on day seven or something like that, and I'm guessing here, day seven on this thing to start taking away, putting water bar in, fixing fences, and doing that. And it's a combination between, it's actually everybody, it's CAL Fire, Forest Service, the team, others, everybody, masticators, masticators, all kinds of equipment, just working on, a couple of pages worth on a plan, so a lot of resources. And so, they're working this, and so far of the 120 miles that we're estimating at this point, we've done about 20 miles so far, and we're kicking it up and getting more resources over here on this side, started over in what I call Division AB, so we're working all these lines right here that you see, or roughly see, and working our way back up to trying into where there's no more, no more dozer line. So we're water barring them, putting, fixing them, and all that as we go. And likewise, up on the top here on the north side of Toowalomee. I think that's it. Quick questions? Any question? A question?
I live close to the back ready road, and there's a lot of slash that got cut. What do you do with it?
Good, good question. We got, we got what I call strike teams, but a lot, a lot of shippers, and we come out there and we've been shipping, we've been shipping, and that's something, I'm glad you said that, because we have been shipping, like, we've been shipping along here, we've been shipping along the Cottonwood Road, everybody knows the Cottonwood Road. We've been shipping along the Cottonwood Road, and we've been doing some shipping along 120, and we're working our way all the way around the fire. Taking some of the stuff that we've been cutting and that they put to the side, now we come back and we're working with shippers and crews and...
If you, we're still finding some of these places, so if you want to give your address specifically to our liaison back here to make sure we know about it?
Sure.
Joseph P. Lebo, I reside over in Sherwood Forest. First of all, I want to thank you for taking a bad situation and trying to get around extremely well, number one. Number two, I have a couple of questions for you. One is the donut hole area up there, when is the activity expected to reduce, where we won't get so much smoke? And the second question is, I know the fire could change drastically from day to day, do we look like we're still on target for a September 20 containment?
Good question, and a couple of other things. I didn't paint the picture of what it looks like inside. I flew the fire here a while, two days ago, the Forest Supervisor flew the fire here not two, or yesterday? Two days ago?
Three days.
Okay, three days ago, two days ago. And, you know, as you guess out here in this country, right around here, it burned pretty hot, right? My friend Tom Atkins and the crowd and all those guys have been on fires where it's been a lot of heavy brush right here and all that, and that's the way it burns. It's got a lot of shmeesh and all that kind of stuff, and this burned very hot. But the cool part, not all of this looks like it's just gone. It's not, it's not. There's a lot of green islands out here, there's a lot of trees out here still standing that I believe will survive, and there's also out here, and in this country, here. Even that, even that, when we did that burning on that donut hole that you're asking, and how much heat that's going to hold, that thing is just backing off right now as a ground fire, and not, hasn't gotten into too many trees. I'm not going to paint the picture that there's not a lot of places that got nuked, but it's still working its way down in there. And how long are you going to live with the smoke? For a while. It's a 250,000 acre fire, and you're going to live with that smoke for a bit. There's a lot of heavy fuels, there's a lot of stuff that's still burning in there, and I don't think that you can expect firefighters to go out here in the middle and chase everything, especially in that steep ground like in Klavy and all that country. Very tough to do. So, back to, I can still answer, you got two of those questions, click on. The other one is the 9/20 date that you're talking about on the containment, I'm going to stick with it.
I know things can change, I'm just...
Right? Right? But I believe that we're on a good glide path to 9/20 of this thing being contained. And the definition of contain is that have a high reliability of all the way around here that this fire not escape.
Thank you.
Sir?
I'm on Pine Mountain Maintenance. A lot of work up on our side, if there'd be in the southwest corner down there, and rim truck fuel breaks down there, how effective are these fuel breaks to keep the fire contained?
Ah, you know, the Forest, and I think the Forest Service and the Forest, the way I understand it, is doing a study as we speak on that very subject. And the question, did you hear? Probably didn't hear. Yeah. Okay, well, I'll repeat it. The question was, is that there's been a lot of work out down here on the rim truck trail, and some of the, basically, how effective is some of the fuels work? How many people know what the SWIFT projects are and the Fire Safe Council stuff? There's a few of you maybe, but there's been a lot of hard work, starting with Tom James, who was here in '87 on this stuff. And there's been a lot of hard work, especially in the Groveland really kind of started this, and on the 108, there are some that I would like to say that I helped start, is over here on the 108, but Tom James started this long before I did, and really took a baton and started, you know, making strategies for fire defense systems and all that kind of stuff. In my opinion, did a very good job. In my opinion, they worked. Steve, did you use it?
They did.
Did they work?
They are.
They're grateful for all the hard work.
So, in other words, there's a lot of good work that was happening beforehand that may have, you know, I wasn't here on the initial part of it, but may have done a lot, a lot of saving of land, property, and every other thing that you got out there. And a lot of that's attributed to, like, Tom James and et cetera. Uh, I was going to take you in the back, I see you in the back, but I think that, there was...
I'm just curious, how much aerial assets you still are using on this fire?
Eh, good question. You keep catching me. I'm a little tired and a little dull today, but you got 11 helicopters, and they got, they got, there's type one assets, big helicopters, we got a mix of all the helicopters. They got a hoist helicopter sitting there, I don't count, but I do have a helicopter that can fly at night and hoist people out in case of getting them. So 11 total. And then, in the fixed wings, we got, I believe there's still a V-LAT down in the Castle Air Force Base, and we also got the... Castle Air Force Base and, uh, and we also got the, um, Cow Fire S2 sitting here at Columbia, I believe. Uh, oh ma'am, wait a minute, I gotta go back to that guy.
I have a question. Uh, the pine trees where the fire was real hot underneath them and the leaves have all, uh, turned brown, but they, uh, didn't actually burn, are, are those going to grow back or no? And will, if the trees that aren't, um, going to grow back, are they going to be harvested? And do you have an idea of what timing that would be?
Um, well, the, like, the, you mean like if, if, uh, if the fire burned up on the trees and took the leaves out and everything?
Well, we went over to Yosemite the other day and there's quite a few sections where the fire had apparently been underneath. If it burned up into the branches, they would all have no leaves or no pine needles on them. They still have the needles on, but the heat had turned them, you know, from green to brown. And I don't know, is that enough where those kills those trees?
I think that's where it says, how much of that has gotten brown and, and, uh, whether it's going to survive or not. And I think it's going to be an over time thing to whether, whether that, a, that tree survives. And I think it's a conglomerate, but a good portion of them, if they haven't gotten, that cambium hasn't gotten burned, I think that it's going to, they have a good chance to burn. It depends on how severe the, the heat was.
But they probably wouldn't harvest very much, uh, until they wait to see what ones come back and what ones don't.
You know, we have a, a kind of a scientific paper on mortality, uh, with trees with scorch on them and, uh, how much of the needles are brown and stuff like that. It's pretty scientific, but, um, you know, generally if the needles are, this is generally across all species that have needles, about three quarters of the tree brown, it could still survive, but it's kind of right on the bubble there. So really, if you got a whole lot of it brown, it might be a tree that we would take, but we're going to look at other things. You know, the distribution of other green trees, if we, if we want to err on, if there's no, not a whole lot of trees with green there, but we want to leave some level of green trees for some of our, uh, you know, our bird species and stuff like that, then we might leave some of those. So it really kind of depends, but in a very general sense, from a forestry perspective, you know, when you're getting up about that 75% of brown needles, you know, then you're really, um, you know, it's really starting to get iffy on survivability.
Are there any air reseeds, like annual wire or something, some grass that will help with the erosion?
Yeah, where's my bear team guy? Uh, that's one of the things they're looking at and assessing right now in their rehabilitation work. So I don't know if you want to talk to that at all or after Jerry, if you want to talk low, or you can get with them one-on-one. I'm looking at him, he's raising his hand up there to show you who he is.
Oh, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, the next question. Um, yes ma'am.
I live in unit 12 above the airport and for the last week, directly out my window, there, every afternoon is an enormous mushroom cloud. Where is that and what's happening with that? I mean, it, it looks hot, hot, it's black.
It scares you.
Well, I know you guys got it under control. I, I just wondered, you know, it's out beyond the gray and ranch. It's up, up, up.
A lot of that heat, a lot of that has been right here. Some of it in, in the last few days have been right in this area. And if we're, we're flying infrared, uh, you know, like, uh, heat sensing equipment at every, uh, every night, somewhere around 11 to midnight and a lot, what it's showing is there's a lot of heat in here and there's a lot of heat in here. This thing's going to cook off of it. You're going to see some of those, you know? And a lot of this, like I said, is not necessarily all burnt. And, and, uh, you're going to see those for, for a bit of time. That's my ask, for a bit of time, till we get some heavy rains and all that and of course it'll moderate. But, um, like I said, the outer perimeter is looking pretty good. Um, of course, would be my famous last words, but the, the thing is, is this thing is looking very good at this time and those, those columns you're seeing are very deep into the burn. And I think that lady there has.
Smoke here for a bit, that means like a month, two months, three months?
Yeah. I can't, I can't paint it any, I, I gotta tell you the truth and I think it's going to be, it's going to be here for, for a while and it's, you know, it's going to moderate. There's going to, this thing's going to stop burning here and stop burning here so it lessens the smoke here and all that kind of stuff, but you're going to have smoke. Hopefully not as much as we've had like coming into, you know, I think a moccasin what the, uh, yesterday and all that stuff. Hopefully, hopefully that you'll have less smoke, but, and that's a hope thing, you know? But I'm going to tell you that prob, a probably thing is you're going to have some smoke here for, for, you know, when I say a month or two months or something like that. You know, we're looking, we're sitting, where are we sitting? We're sitting in, uh, mid-September, right? What happens in October? What happens in October, October 15th, Tom?
Rain.
We, it should rain. Okay, I'll bet it should rain. Mount Elizabeth says it rains and they've been taking weather there for 35 years. I'll bet that there will be some rain there and all that kind of stuff and, and, but we're starting to get into Novembers and all that kinds of stuff versus like if we were in June, July or something like that. So we're going to live with some smoke for a while. Sir. I'm done. I want to be done. I shouldn't say I'm totally done, but, uh, but pretty much all, um, all of us pretty much going to, the footprint you see there is the footprint that I expect that you will see there. Um, the, the question was, when are you going to put your torches down and kind of thing, you know, kind of stuff? And the bottom line is, is that we're pretty much done with any, any, any firing unless there's, there's stuff that is, uh, that we assess along the way here that maybe needing something from a safety standpoint or, 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 or that, that, uh, would need to be burned, but I do not envision that at this time.
I have a question here. Oh, so, so after you have your containment all taken care of and then the middle, if the middle's burning and it's out in the wilderness, do you have guys that are going, looking for those hot spots or do you just kind of let it burn when it's out in the wilderness to burn up?
Now, we never let, uh, uh, like I say, right up here, when I was asking you, I was kind of quizzing you about the rocks up here and all that kind of stuff, there's, there's, uh, like in this area, there's a lot of rock right there. There's, there's also 40 people out there camping out there and checking that thing and making sure.
But I mean, in the middle, like in the middle of some of those spots you're saying they have.
Here?
And if they decide to burn in those islands, do you guys let them burn or do you try to put them out?
You know what? It is going to be probably past my time, my turn on the fire, but you know what? There are times where you can take a look at this. Once we get this thing, my, 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 one of my main mission is to stop the spread of the fire getting any bigger than it is. That's the main mission. But when you look in here and you got island, what, what I would term is, did you hear the question? Okay, sorry. If I didn't hear it, say, hey, say it again. Um, then in this, in this area, if there's big huge islands or something that would, that, might get somebody committed here, but I'm, is that there are times where you can go down here and you can start cutting lines around them and isolate those islands to protect them and all that kinds of stuff. That's, that is a technique that has been used. Okay, John.
Way too many easy questions for you, Jerry, so I at least give you one more difficult one. Um, obviously you guys had all the best information, so nobody can even begin to, to question, you know, the strategies for where lines or dozer lines or anything, but you were talking about that donut of, you know, 10,000 acres, 15 square miles of habitat. And in many cases, wildlife will have moved into the green from all the burn areas and now was in the donut hole. I know that normally you would have had a half mile buffer, worked it in. You still had many, many miles of green in there and you were talking about even now potentially doing additional burnouts. So all I'm asking is, I understand the maximizing of reducing risk to get it out, but once you more or less have that, isn't it also a priority where possible to leave those green islands because that's where the wildlife's moved to out of a lot of these big burn areas?
I have a question, John. And the bottom line is, is when we said you don't see the donut hole over here, it's some of my mapping guys who took that donut hole away. It's gone. Hey man, we burned that out. And that vision that you have is like coming out here. Most of that firing was right up here, right up against the line. And, and, and a lot, a lot of that 10,000 acres is still existing there. It's, it didn't get, it's, it's still there. And some of that, it's not all burning. It's not like you took, take the whole 10,000 acre, uh, you know, this whole thing and, and if I painted that picture, I apologize. Damn, man, what is that? Who is, who's in charge of this thing? What is that? I'm being serious. You know, it's scary standing in front of your people. I'm spooked as it is and then all of a sudden something like that happens. Don't do that. But the, but the point of this thing is to work this thing off, work, work this off and then all that's not burning. And we haven't really mapped all that stuff. And some of that, the bear team could have a projection of that. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Patricia Thomas and we have a house on the north side of the airport in unit 12. We were in the cross country last week and I spoke to some of the young firemen that were there and told them that we really appreciate them. I hope that someone is passing along to them that everybody in this room and out there really appreciate what they're doing.
Yeah. Rich, the PIO and myself say, we tell them what we've done during the days and every, every one of those, uh, and if we go to a public meeting and one, I appreciate that, two, we do pass that on to them, you know? And they get a lot, a lot, a lot of things. They get a lot of things from me. I mean, it's one of the things for me, when they're doing this and they're closing the loop, I tell them, good job. It's a good, good job. So, yeah. Are you ready Maggie? Is that what you guys are doing?
Whenever.
Any more questions from fire standpoint? Sir.
Question for the forest supervisor.
Oh, cool.
When will the forest services review of the management of this fire be completed? How will the staffs go about making that available to the public?
He was asking how when will the forest services review of this fire be completed and will that be available to the public? So I'm not sure what completed review you're speaking of. We have different pieces being looked at, like for example, we have researchers out there and, uh, fuels experts that looking, that are looking at the success of our fuels treatment. The question came from up here before, somebody asked that question about, you know, whether or not they're successful or not. So we got that piece as being looked at right now. Um, I suspect if, you know, if somebody, uh, an elected official from higher up request ones, our chief will probably say, yes, we'll have one. But I don't know of a overall comprehensive review that's been started at this point in time. But those are always, they do become available to the public when they're done, for sure.
And how will the staffs ensure the public's aware of that review?
Um, we don't have anything to hide, so there'd probably be some level of, you know, press. I don't know, I guess we put it on our website or whatever be normal business as it, you know, like when we do typical planning for projects and stuff like that, so. But it's a good question to keep asking to see if one's being started and who's carrying it out, you know, what level, what they're looking at, what, uh, specific thing that they're looking at.
Can I ask you the same kind of thing? I mean, how to do with that? My question is, it seems like the priorities for the forest management, is anyone talking about shifting that a little bit more to controlled fuel and, and look at the reforestation as maybe since so much of the reforested area burned, that maybe there was something else that should have been done differently there?
Yeah, you know, I certainly think we're open to looking at and figuring out what worked, what didn't work. I mean, we know we want a forest back there, we know we want to reforest it. Um, we also know that there's a lot of really street, steep ground and so on that very steep ground, we probably aren't going to be able to salvage what's there because you'd have to pull it out by helicopter and it won't pay for itself. But we're going to look at salvaging where we can, where it makes sense to do that. And, um, you know, at, uh, looking at the treatments that we did, like that team that's here, what's successful. I mean, we know the one around Pine Mountain Lake there, um, with the treatment that's been done there, it allowed us to put firefighters in there to hold that. You know, it doesn't necessarily stop the fire, but it allows us to be able to do the work we need to do when fire is coming at it. So there are, there's a variety of successes in, in different ways.
Susan, when, when you go back to replanting, um, there are places in the country where it's been replanted, all the same species of tree. Are we going to get a forest or a tree farm?
Well, we hope we get a tree, a forest filled with trees. You know, that's not my area of expertise. We'll have silviculturists who spend their whole career figuring out what is the species mix? What is the spacing? Is it clumpy? Is it spaced evenly? All that kind of stuff, you know? Or looking at natural regeneration where we have some green trees still there? Because there is quite a bit of mosaic. I mean, you don't see that when you're driving the 120 route and you look at the rim, you go, oh my gosh. But when, once you drive through it and really head north, you see a lot more mosaic, which is really heartening from, from our perspective. So it'll, it'll vary.
The public relation, you know, it'd be nice to see, have, uh, pictures, see videos of the burned area, explain that this is the northeast, the, this is the south and this is, you know, just to, to educate the public. One of the worst things during this, this thing here, I was here in 87, the Box fire and I thought I'd run out there and do my civic duty, you know, and help out. I saw that fire, it went back, I collected the family, went, went back to the Bay Area. And, uh, that was awesome. It never found out too much about Box Canyon. Don't even know how large it was, but I, we knew our home was saved and, um, grateful, of course. But, you know, on a public relations and a, you know, KTVU or, or, not KTVU, I'm Channel 6, whatever they, they call it, um, public broadcasting. Uh, jeez, you ought to go out there right now and start filming this stuff. Let the public know what they're up against before they start paying for this massive cleanup.
Yeah. We, one thing that we've done, the handout we have outside here has, uh, some web links. One of those is a Flickr page and that, we have hundreds of photographs of the fire and also we've built a blog site where we could put some video and where we've come up with some good video from firefighters or different folks that have been out there, we've posted that. And certainly that can continue on. The bear team that's here is building a, a website to, um, cover their issues and I, I think that's a really good suggestion. So thank you.
Are they identified where they, you know, fall from?
Yeah. Where, where we can, we're trying to identify the different locations. We don't always get the documentation of where the picture was taken, but where we can, we're trying to put that in there and we'll continue to do that as long as we're here.
Like, there's a lot of stuff, kind of like what my friend John's asking about the donut hole. And take a look and show and point it out to what, where it is, like in the Klavy and all that kind of stuff to give the picture.
Okay, let's take a couple more questions and then I'm going to have Maggie make a closing statement, then we'll break up and we'll be available for more questions. Okay, go ahead.
Is San Francisco helping financially because of Hetchchi?
So San Francisco, they're certainly seeing the effects of wildfire. So we are in early discussions about this landscape that sees regular fire and is there something we can do differently than what we have been doing? And we certainly at the highest levels are working on that, very, very preliminary. But my feeling from talking to a couple of the Hetchchi folks, uh, from the city that have been here is they're really, really interested. You know, prevention is worth, it's a lot of money. So, yeah, so we'll see.
I belong to a men's group and one of the speakers was Sierra Pacific logging. And one of the questions we, that was presented to him is, do you, are you allowed to go in
in the burn areas and take the wood out if the trees don't survive? Can you have the wood? 'Cause the wood is still good. And he said, no, they won't allow them in there to do that, and they have a program where they replant and everything. Why aren't they allowed to log that area?
Um, they'll, they'll be able to. We'll have to do some planning and go through some peaks, hoops that we have to go through legally. We have different laws than private industry does. They're gonna, they're gonna be in their private land probably by the end of next week, starting to haul, but they'll be hauling north, I would assume, you know, out the Tawami side.
Yeah, 'cause they said they'd get in and they replant and everything.
Right. And, and so do we.
That's a good deal.
Yeah. And so we'll be looking at what we wanna salvage out there, and then we put it up for bid, so variety of loggers or timber companies can bid on it. Somebody give them a heart.
You know what, one thing I didn't mention, and one thing that I ought to mention, is the county and all, like the county EOC, uh, your emergency operations center and all that kind of stuff, those people, for like, uh, Sheriff's Department, um, Animal Control and all those people. I gotta tell you, they were working hard on the onset of the fire, they did a heck of a job, and they were beat. And I, I saw that, yeah, before I got to the fire. They did one good job, and I wanted to just pass that on to all my friends here that, that, you know, we, we remember the firefighters and all the job there, but there's a lot of other people that were behind the scenes that were working hard too. So, did that start a question? Go ahead.
What happened to the crazy bow hunter from Oakia and stuff?
What happened to the crazy bow hunter to start the fire? Is that the stance? Okay, here you go.
As you've read in the paper, a hunter started an illegal fire, is what the investigators have released. We don't know anything more than that, and it's gonna be a while. I mean, they are very, very meticulous and thorough in their investigation, and you can imagine why, at a price tag of $100 million.
How important was the, the use of the various airports around the perimeter of the fire? We were watching it from afar, so we weren't actually there.
All the airports, including like, uh, like, uh, up here, the, uh, Bald Mountain Hill Base, Columbia Air Attack Base, Pine Mountain Lake, and, and Castle Air Force Base, all those were very, uh, worked very well. You know one of the reasons why? That the smoke laid over here, you can approach from another, another area. So it gives you the abilities to, you know, use your air force in different places so that, so that, so that you can use your air force. There's a lot of times, well, you can't get up, too smoky or whatever, so it's one of those tactical things. Those air guys are smart, man. They put those things all over the place so they don't get caught with their pants down. Sir.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the 5,000 people that have come out here and, uh, saved our homes and, uh, as much of the forest as possible. The communications has, that have been pretty exhausted, and one of the things that I've noticed is that cell phone internet perception has significantly improved since you guys got here. Keep it? It was, it was really scary, man, you know, you get spotty service, and while you guys know what's going on, for the rest of us, we didn't really know about it so much, but it's significantly improved. And, uh, you know, if there's a way to keep it. Add a million to that hundred.
You know, there's things like those, what they call the cow, it's a cellular wheels, and that's some of the things that, that get pumped up, we bring them in, and, but there's a cost to them and all that. I'll tell you, you know, there's another thing I didn't mention, is we had the, um, we had a fire camp, we have a fire camp in Drew Meadows, uh, up in there, and, but the, the lines, AT teams working hard to try to get the infrastructure in. By the way, Pete Genie, um, really jumping on this thing and got the power on, and, uh, and Hetch-Echi's working hard to get their power, power up and get their infrastructure back on, in place too. And, uh, but my point was, um, it wasn't in place up, up, uh, up on Drew Meadow here, and, uh, was costing, uh, quite a bit of money, just for the connectivity of computers to share information, for the IOs to get out information, and my, my plan folks to make IEPs and, or internet, uh, plans, and all that stuff. And it was costing a fortune, and that's why I said, you know what, we're moving back over here to Tawam, bitch, where we got all that, we got the ability to that, and it's a heck of a lot cheaper. You know, a lot of effort, when you talk about 5,000 people, a lot of effort when you're talking about the aircraft and all that. But all that effort comes with a price, you know? And, and so it's my, my job at this point, um, with my bosses, is to, you know, get the price down. And so, sorry about the cell service.
Okay, um, I'm gonna hand it over to Maggie, um, your district ranger here. She wanted to say a few words before we conclude, and I, I thank you all for coming, and we appreciate it, and we'll be around again, uh, to try to answer questions, and, and not everybody likes to speak in front of an audience, so we'll be here, you can come up and ask us questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It was only about three weeks ago I was here with some of you, um, and we've been through a hell of a ride, I think. I wanted just a few seconds to share with you, 'cause I, like you, I share your pain in terms of what we went through three weeks ago, with an evacuation of my district office, with an evacuation of my home, like your home, with power, with losing power. Um, we stand together in this community, and I am so proud of all the cooperation and your efforts and your patience when it came to with the 120 highway. Um, I have never seen a community really come together as, as you have done over the last couple of weeks, and do know that we will stay together over the next few years, into 10 to 20 years possibly. Um, I just wanted to say a final thought, that my staff and I, and I know I can speak on behalf of Kelly and the Park, um, things have changed in this community over the last couple of years, where Jerry and I were faced with another fire, called the Telegraph Fire and the Big Meadow Fire, and sometimes we had to agree to disagree, and we still agree to disagree. But I have never felt more open to you and you to me, um, and what we've lasted through over the last couple of weeks. So, um, I'm here for you, and you guys have been here for me. You have touched me really, really deeply. Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, and I appreciate you coming, and we'll be around. Thank you very much.